Good evening. July 28, 2016, Longview City Council meeting is now called to order. Can you believe July is almost over? Can you believe it's July and we're getting rain? Hallelujah. Tonight, our prayer and pledge will be led by Willie Marshall, the pastor of Harrison Street Church of Christ. Please rise.
Shabbat with me, please. Our kind and loving Father, we come before your throne just now. Dear God, we thank you for this day. We thank you for life. We thank you for the blessings of life. We thank you for the blessings of spiritual life through Christ Jesus our Lord. And to God, we thank you for just the privilege of being able to call you our Father. Thank you to God for blessing this community. We pray to God for those who serve and protect this community. And to God, we ask your wisdom upon them. Help us to realize as your servants that we are under your authority. You are sovereign, and we stand accountable to you for all that we do. We pray for this country to God and those who bravely defended many of the freedoms that we enjoyed. Dear God, we thank you for those who have sacrificed their lives so we might have these freedoms. And to God, we pray for this body who have gathered here on this evening. We ask your wisdom and guidance as decisions are made for the betterment of this community. We ask of God that you would guide their hearts and give them compassion and love and all that they decide for Longview and all of its citizens. And dear God, we'll give you the praise, we'll give you the glory, and we thank you in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
We give attention to the flag, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you Pastor Marshall. We appreciate you. Not you Jimmy, my mom. Okay. And Jimmy. You didn't miss much yet Jimmy. You're okay. Tonight, in employee recognition, we're going to recognize the Drainage Concrete Crew. Guthrie Creek was significantly eroding the banks at Wood Place. A scope of work was developed and the project was sent out for bids. The low bid for this project was $431,000. The Drainage Concrete Crew was established in fiscal year 2008. The crew is responsible for maintaining over 400 inlet boxes and over 500 miles of curbs and over 50 miles of sidewalks and numerous other concrete drainage structures in our community. The city rejected all bids for the Wood Place project and turned to the Drainage Concrete Crew. With their high level of skill and experience, the project was accomplished for only $117,350. Savings to our community was $313,650. For you all that don't recognize that, that's almost a half, that's a half cent on our sales tax. That's almost a cent on our sales tax, but it's at least a half a cent. So I'd like our Drainage Concrete Crew members to please come forward. Henry Plunkett, Gregory Zerniga, Chris Turner, Eric Hawkins, Kim Wallace, and Elroy Brooks. I don't know if you all understand what that significance is, but that is something that has really turned our thinking around on how we do concrete maintenance in Longview. To be able to save $318,000 or whatever that number was is extremely significant, and these gentlemen, they perform that work every single day in our community. These are the guys that come out and repair curbs, repair the streets. They do what we need done and they do it, they're our Johnny on the spots. So when you all have complaints or concerns, these guys respond, and they respond every single time. And I'm so proud of you guys and the fact that you all took it upon yourselves and you all did this. And this is just a, this is, this is where we're going in Longview. We're utilizing this crew to save taxpayers money every single week in Longview. So guys, hats off to you all. I appreciate you so much. I know your, your work is hard. If any of y'all have poured or done concrete, because I have, once, and that's all it took. It's hot, hard, laborious work. These men work hard, they work in the heat, they work all hours of the day, and I appreciate them, and I know you all appreciate them as well. So let's have a round of applause for these men that we really, really appreciate so much. Thank you guys. Thank you all so much. That tells me two things. Tells me, number one, we have some really talented people in our city that can really do a lot of good work. It also tells me we're getting gouged by people bidding our jobs. So you contractors better watch out. We're now to citizen comment. I have two speaker cards. Jason Frye, please come forward, sir.
I just wanted to raise some concerns.
Excuse me, sir. Would you please state your name and your address for us?
Jason Frye, and I'm at 706 Noel Drive.
Thank you, sir.
Recently, I've become the president of our association, and one of the major concerns that we're having is speeding through our neighborhood. A lot of cut-through traffic comes from MLK through to Moberly, and a lot of our residents have kids in that area. It's one of the older neighborhoods in our area in Longview, and currently, I guess the big concern is a lot of our residents go out in the evening and walk their dogs, take their kids around the block, things like that. And we're having a lot of issues with traffic coming through at 60, 50, 60 miles an hour. We've talked to, I believe it's Stephen Haw with the Public Works Department. He's informed us that the policy with the city is basically, they don't use stop signs to control speed, is what we've been told. We've suggested that studies be done on certain intersections. It's our understanding that that has been done, but the information that was retrieved from that didn't justify a stop sign. We've also suggested speed humps rather than the speed bumps, and there is a difference. It sounds kind of crazy, but, and we've even suggested that our community raise the money to install those. And the city's response to us was basically, we don't allow you to do it and we don't do it because they don't control speed. So that's one of our major concerns with our area, and the children in our area is really the most important part of that. We do have a lot of younger couples with kids. We are on the south side, and I think we kind of feel, the community kind of feels like we get neglected a little bit because we are on the south side. So I wanted to find out from you guys, what, what do we need to do to put in some kind of formal request to either, I guess, have the, have that area reevaluated for traffic or maybe reconsider the stop signs or the usage of speed humps or speed bumps to kind of help alleviate that?
Thank you, sir. What we'll do, we'll get you in touch with your council representative and get this worked out, okay?
Okay.
Thank you very much. If you will stick around after the meeting or just make sure you know who your representative is and make contact, okay? Thank you, sir. Ms. Sheila Ann Maxi?
Good evening to the council, to the city manager and the mayor, and also the public that is attending. I'm, I want to make...
Ms. Maxi, will you please state your name and your address, please?
Yes, my name is Sheila Ann Maxi. My address is 21 Evin Street.
Thank you.
Yeah, first of all, I want to talk about the congestion between Cotton Street, the traffic congestion between Cotton Street and Nelson. But it's heavy between Cotton and College Streets. And it's real difficult to cross over to like Hilltop College when you get off the bus, and then also, even if you go to the light, the lights, they do not hold long enough for you to cross the street. And the way that some of the drivers drive, they turn and they're not paying attention to pedestrians when they're walking across the street, okay? And so I think that there needs to be a traffic study done. I have talked to Mr. Haw about this, and he did respond to me, but I wasn't really, because I was talking to him about moving the, maybe moving the bus stop or doing a pedestrian crosswalk across from the west side of High to the east side where Hilltop College is. But it's real congested in this, in this area. The other thing I wanted to talk about is on the Cotton Street expansion, you're going to be doing expansion going east on Cotton Street. And there are some bricks that are there that were, that's been there for a long time. And when you did other expansion years back, several years back, well, you kind of like, had already started working on it before I, you know, saw it. And those, and you removed a lot of the bricks and stuff that were laid, like on Green Street and on, let's see, I think it was on Methan Street. But right there at Freedonia and Cotton Street, those bricks were laid by the Slayes, and it's very skilled work. And I think that when you, when expansion is done, that there should be consideration as far as historic landmarks and stuff within the city because, and I, and I'll give an example, like the Janie Daniels School where Popeye's is now, that, that's a historic black school. It was also the, Longview Colored School before it moved to the WAMAC location. And I came through there one day and I was going into that neighborhood and I said, "They're tearing that school down," you know, and I didn't even know anything about it. And so I just want to suggest that whenever the, the city decides to do expansions, that they should consider historic, historic landmarks. And that's all I have to say, and I may have to leave right now, and I apologize that I have to leave.
Thank you, Ms. Maxi.
But I wanted to bring that out. All right.
Appreciate you. We're now to our public safety update. Chief Bishop?
Mayor Matt, council members, Mr. Willard, I have just a few things to share tonight. I'd like to remind everybody of our upcoming Citizens Police Academy that will be held on Tuesdays and Thursdays beginning on September 8th and running through October 20th. If you're interested in attending, you can download an application at longviewtexas.gov/cpa. This is a good opportunity for our citizens to come, spend some time with the different divisions and members of our department to help have a better understanding of how your police department operates. So we have a limited number of seats available, so for those that are interested, the sooner they can get the applications in, the better. We also have our free women's safety course that we'll be doing, September 19 through the 24th. This will be held at MODCOB from 6 to 9. This is by far one of our popular courses, taught specifically for, for women. Those that are interested can contact 237-1199 for registration, or they can download the application at longviewtexas.gov/womensafety. Also last week, we had a graduation for our Spanish-speaking Citizens Police Academy. We had 22 graduates from the program. This was a very good, a very good course on the information that we provided to them about how the police department works and some different divisions within the city. So I want to give a shout out to Revolutionized Lives on Moberly for helping liaison with the police department and creating this Citizens Police Academy for our Spanish-speaking citizens. Also last week, the police department, our school resource officers finished up a week-long summer camp at the Boys and Girls Club. On this particular day here, they got to meet all three of the K-9 officers and our K-9 dogs, had a demonstration for them, and had a good time teaching them a little bit about what the police department does as well. That's important for us to reach out to our youth and show them some of the, the equipment that we use in the police department. And then last, I want to give a shout out to our Longview Police Officers Association. They found out that the Boys and Girls Club was in need of school supplies, so they took it upon themselves and went out and spent several hundred dollars to buy notebooks and pencils and paper and stuff to make sure that the kids had some school supplies to start the, the school year with. So with that, I'll answer any questions.
Chief, thank you for your interaction with the community, with the kids and all that you all doing, and I know you all are having a tough week. Keep it up.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Chief Steelman?
Mayor Matt, council members, Mr. Willard, thanks for the opportunity to brief you on a few things from the perspective of the fire department. Occasionally, we get inquiries about our city's early warning system, and because the fire department is tasked with the emergency management perspective or the process for our city, this falls under our purview. And I just wanted to reiterate to the public that we do have a pretty comprehensive early warning system, and it's actually a two-step process, and that's the part that I really want to stress. We have the old original, actually, they're all new and updated, but the, the old outdoor warning sirens, which, you know, the technology is a little bit kind of 1950s, but in a city like ours with such outdoor activities and many visitors that are coming into town, this is still an effective way of getting the public's attention. But that's only part of the story. These sirens are simply meant to say, "Hey, we know something that you don't know that you may want to start paying attention to," and to basically get the public's attention. And you can see a map there where our 20 sirens are dispersed around the city and the coverage area on each one of those is about a mile and a half in circumference. So we get calls all the time from citizens that say, "I can't hear the siren in my house." Well, if you live on the fringe of where two of those coverage zones overlap, there's a pretty good chance in your insulated house with a TV on or any appliances running, you may not hear the sirens to their full extent. So to solve that, the city also has the second part of this process, which is the Code Red Notification System. Now, this notification system is a recorded message that will bring you up-to-date information about why those sirens are going off. And all you have to do, this is a free service that the city provides, is call our communications center, go to the city's website, and register for this. You can register your home phone, your cellphone, as long as you live inside the city of Longview. So if you want the second half of that message other than to say, "Hey, we know something that you don't," this is where you get that information. So we highly encourage the public to take advantage of this opportunity so that it kind of tells the rest of the story. Moving on from that, and you know, actually, I put this slide in this morning, and lo and behold, the temperatures dropped a little bit. But just a reminder that summertime's upon us, we're starting to see a little bit of an uptick in heat-related illnesses and emergencies out there. So just, just be smart and use caution if you're out working outdoors, if you're out playing outdoors. I know football two-a-days are fixing to get started. It's hot, and it's going to get hotter again. We've got another at least a month and a half of extreme temperatures. So make sure people are staying hydrated, you're monitoring one another, take plenty of breaks, just use common sense, and don't push yourself. The last thing that we want to do is pick you up in the ambulance and take you to the hospital, so kind of monitor that for each other. And then last, but certainly very important, within the last week, we have experienced yet another arson fire. This one actually happened in Council District 3. The fire, while it was relatively kept minor, it still is indicative of a string of events that have been, that we've been experiencing since the first of the year. So we are aggressively working every one of these arson cases, and we're just encouraging the public, if they have any information, and no piece of information is too small, to contact our Fire Marshal's Office. That number's 903-237-1119. And we certainly are all about enlisting the public's help and trying to put a stop to this. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Chief, thank you for the update, especially the siren update, because we do get a lot of questions about that, and it's nice to know that there are 20 in town that you all are offering a basically a two-tiered system. You all have it covered, and I appreciate that and your interaction with the community, and I know you all have had a tough week too. So thank you guys for all that you do.
Thank you, Mayor.
Appreciate you all. We're now to the consent agenda. Is there any items that could be pulled off for separate discussion?
I'd like to pull off, I have a contract with Hilltop Securities, please.
We shall do that. Anything else? Okay, and is there a motion for consent agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Is there a motion? Mr. Moore, would you like to discuss? Number K, number F?
Not necessarily, Mayor. I just want to inform the public that the city attorney has informed me that I have no conflict of interest with either Southwest Securities or Hilltop Securities since I receive no compensation from them, but I would feel better abstaining on this item and possibly the public would have a better comfort level also. So that's my intention on this side.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. We appreciate that. Is there a motion?
Motion approved.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries with the significance that Mr. Moore abstains. Thank you very much. At the record show. We're now to the budget presentation. Mr. Willard? Oh, you don't have one tonight? Thank you, Mr. Willard. Appreciate that.
It's good with me.
Remember what I said yesterday, Mr. Willard? Let go meeting. Short and sweet. Wasn't that what I said?
Short and sweet. Just like church, right?
Which one?
You know, we talk about our public safety updates in our staff meetings every Wednesday, and I can't help but, Chief Steelman will be ready to go with his most popular award-winning commercial for ambulance subscription services in a few weeks, right Chief? So he's got pretty good at those commercials last year, and he's, he's gearing up for this year too. Well, Mayor and City Council, it's my pleasure tonight to present for your consideration proposed budget for the city of Longview for 2016 and 17. As we go forward from tonight, there will be plenty of opportunities for discussion and public input. The city staff will be more than happy to answer any questions you might have, as well as providing you with any other information necessary to help you make informed decision, decisions. Preparation for tonight's proposed budget really began in earnest last April when I requested departments to make nearly $3 million in cuts to the current city budget this year. These mid-year reductions were in response to falling city revenues, including a sales tax shortfall of greater than $2 million. I was very proud of the leadership exhibited by each department to find significant savings in their budgets. Those mid-year budget cuts served as the starting point for the 15, for the 16, 17 budget as we prepared for continued reductions in revenue. For this year's budget, I'm happy to say that our goal was to avoid the use of general fund balance or tax rate increases. We knew that we needed to make some budget cuts while at the same time limiting the direct impact to core services, especially public safety. We also had to absorb increasing healthcare costs and a full year of a newly opened animal shelter. Additionally, we viewed layoffs and pay cuts as a last resort, something that we were thankfully able to avoid this year, and I'm really happy about that. However, there were some difficult choices made that will need to be remedied in future budgets when the local economy recovers. It's our recommendation that as funds are made available, the council restore budget cuts before adding new programs. This budget does not include contributions from the General Fund for Vehicle Replacement or Fire Apparatus Replacement, and this is something that we felt that we could be delayed right now, but would need to address in the future. And I want to stress as we go through this budget that we're not out of the woods yet on our economy, and we do have a balanced budget, but we just continue, must, must continue to monitor our economy and the revenues that we have. We want to continue to provide the best level of service and remain financially responsible as we go along. I want to show you really, and as I said in the present, in the opening, that tonight's budget, proposed budget, really begins with our mid-year budget cuts of last year, and I want to take just a second and remind you of some of those things. This first slide is the original budget that you all adopted a little over a year ago, or nearly a year ago, the 15, 16 budget that we are currently operating under. And in that budget, you'll remember that you allowed us to use $1.825 million of fund balance reserve to help close our budget gap last year. Plus, you authorized a budget amendment in addition to that of $1,480, and that allowed us to pay off some leases and with looking forward to this year's budget to keep those out of the operating budget. And so we ended up with that fund balance as we began the year last year. And then at mid-year, we did a forecast. We had continuing decline in, in our revenues, our sales taxes, and this is when the staff, your directors and managers really came together in a serious way to address these budget shortfalls. And I want to just really take a second and I want to give a lot of accolades to our city staff, our managers, our directors. I've, I've been, I was in business for 15 years before I got into this line of work, and I've been in this line of work 27 years, so you can figure out the math how old I am probably. But I've never seen, honestly, a staff of people take so seriously their responsibility to get in there and cut a budget and, and not try to hold anything back, but yet protect the services they, they need to provide, and yet they really understood the, the nature of what we needed to do. And I know that, that city workers and city employees get a lot of bad press sometimes because, you know, people say that we are just mindless bureaucrats and operate with other people's money, which is, we do use other people's money, the taxpayers' money, but I can assure you, this group of, of city employees are not like that, and I think you all in the public, you know, really need to know that and understand. I'm very proud of them for the work they've done. Anyway, Sean, I wasn't quite through there. Okay. So we came at mid-year, cut our budget down by $2.5 million to get down to where we would not spend more than what you'd allowed us to spend there at mid-year. So we are ending the year up. Well, here's, I'm sorry, I got ahead. Here are the, the cuts, if you'll remember some that we made through, at that time, we had nearly $3 million that we had ready to cut if necessary, and we monitored through the end of the year. The third column, I think, is very important, and I'm proud of this as well. This is where we're going to end up at the end of this month, or at the end of September. The middle is what we proposed to do, and we're going to end the year up spending less than the $1.8 million in reserve that we had for that year. Matter of fact, we spent $1,1586,061, and we're going to increase our fund balance in what we started out with last year. So I think, again, I'm very proud of the way our staff has managed their money and, and come in under budget this year. Okay, for this, this budget, again, as we started, there's some assumptions that, that we're going forward with. The impact of sales tax declines, continue our mid-year budget cuts. We budgeted without the use of any general fund balance. We're not going to propose any property tax rate increase, no rate increase for water, sewer, or sanitation. We budgeted a full year of animal shelter operations. We're making progress on comprehensive plan items where possible. We'll make reductions but limit impact on services. So our proposed budget for the general fund, we're projecting revenues of $64,674,897 with expenditures to match that. That would leave us a fund balance of a little over $9 million, which is 14.27% of fund balance. And that's, you know, we have a requirement on the fund balance of 10%, so that gives a cushion of $2.7 million above that 10% number. Here is just a pie chart of the general fund revenue, and you see, you know, the, the large majority, again, of sales tax and property tax revenue is about 60% of our budget in the general fund. And as we talked about at mid-year, when, when we lose that much sales tax revenue and/or property values, it really does affect... and/or property values, it really does affect us. Here is a busy chart, but I think this is a very interesting, this shows a historical look at our sales tax collections. And 2016, and of course, that's a projection because we haven't, that this year will end in September, but we believe we'll end up at a little over $19.5 million of sales tax revenue. And 2017, we're budgeting a little bit more decline in our sales tax revenue. I don't think we're quite through yet on the decline. I think hopefully this will take care of it. But what's interesting, if you look back to 2009, that's about the level of sales tax collections that we've had at this level. And you see, and everybody remembers 2010 and the real downturn we had that year, and we, we did some mid-year budget cuts that year. But the big difference in 2011, it, it popped right back up to the $20 million range. And what's been so difficult this time is, is we had the drop, a lot more drop, but it, it has not picked back up. It's been an extended period. So, that, that's really one big difference that's interesting to note. But hopefully, we're getting close to finding the bottom on our sales tax, and hopefully we'll start trending upward. Property tax revenue, this is the story of the night, I think, and has really, really helped us, and I'm really thankful for our property values coming in like they did. You'll remember at mid-year, we got a mid-year projection that our appraisals would come in probably 5% below last year's property values, which if it'd come in 5% below, that would cost us $1 million to the, the general fund and lost revenue. And our projection, or came in at 2017, Greg County appraisal was, I think, a half a percent under what it was last year as opposed to 5% down. And then Harrison County came in, and, and you'll understand, a small portion of the city of Longview is in Harrison County, but it does represent a pretty good amount of industrial property tax. And Harrison County came in 13% above last year, which was a, a real shock to us. Now, as I say, it, if Greg County had come in 13% above, we'd, we'd already closed our books and go home. But, but we're thankful for Harrison County. So, anyway, all that results in revenue gain from property taxes from last year, not by a whole lot, a couple hundred thousand dollars, but still real thankful for that. And I think, I think that's a great sign that maybe we've, we've bottomed out and that we'll have some good increases coming in the future, and I hope sales tax will follow what our property values have done. This is our property tax rate chart that, and I'm proud of this chart as well. You'll see our property taxes are made up of two components. M and O, which is maintenance and operations, that's what we levy to do our day-to-day operations in the general fund, and then our debt rate, which is the other portion, and that pays our debt service and our bonded indebtedness. And you'll see that for the third year in the, in a row, we're going to project no tax increase at all, the same as it was in 2015. Really, the only increases in 2011, that was the $52 million bond package that the voters passed, and so, we have spent, we have another $8 million to issue here shortly, and that will finish out that package. But we've been able to fund the debt service on 50, nearly $52 million without much of a, a debt rate increase at all since that time period, and for the, this is the third year without any kind of increase to the tax rate at all. Just a little quick summary on revenue. Of course, in this new budget, we're projecting a sales tax loss from our previous budget of $2.3 million that we factored in. We've had other revenue losses, municipal court, you know, development services, I think, and other areas of, our areas of franchise fees, franchise taxes with our utilities has gone down quite a bit. That represents about $705,000. We've had some gains for this year, and here's where I want us to be cautious going forward because, as I said, we're not out of the woods yet, but we've had some one-time revenues this year that have really helped us going forward this, in this coming year. We had an increase in property tax revenue of $108,000. That represents the increase from Harrison County that we got. We're going to be getting $848,000 of reimbursement. The George Ritchie Road Project is being completed, and we had a contract with Longview Economic Development Corporation for this final payment. So, this will be a one-time revenue for the next year that will be finished. We also, and I want to give Mr. Moore kudos for this, kudos, I guess. I've been around J Dean too long. That was a Freudian slip. Kudos. Give you kudos, Mr. Moore, on this utility reimbursement on street bonds. As you know, the $52 million bond package, when not only took care of a lot of streets, but we also, while we were doing that, we repaired all the utilities underneath that, the water and sewer lines, as we went and did that. And of course, all that bond money was paid out of the general fund, and Mr. Moore rightly pointed out to us that we really needed to be allocating some of those costs back to Water and Sewer Fund for their portion of, you know, the work in, on those projects. So, we're going to be transferring that amount of money into the general fund to help pay back on the street work. So, Ed, thank you for your work in that. Also, another one-time, we're deferring a drainage CIP project, which you don't like to, you know, to defer maintenance, defer projects, but we're trying to get through this one year, this next year. And so, my point is, is that we do have a balanced budget. We're not using fund balance, but we have quite a bit of one-time revenue that won't be there the year after next that we're going to hopefully have to replace with up, improve sales tax or those things. So, back to the point where we just are reluctant to add new things in, we want to add back in things that we cut as we are able to do that in going forward. Here's, I won't spend much time here. The expenditures in the general fund, again, fire and police, 63% of our general fund budget goes to public safety, and I'm, again, real proud of both of our chiefs and their departments. They, we told them we did not want to cut the budgets to where it would impact their ability to serve and protect, and they assured me that they could live with these levels, and so, we appreciate their efforts as well. Real quickly, I won't spend a lot of time here. Here are continued budget cuts. We're keeping vehicle replacement, again, out of the budget. That represents nearly $1 million, as well as our fire apparatus, apparatus replacement. And again, these are not things that you would normally want to do as a manager, but, you know, we're deferring vehicle maintenance, and hopefully, as the economy picks up, we can real quickly, next year or two, get this back where we're on track, and we don't want to get in the shape where we can't buy our vehicles to, to do what we need to do. But that is out also. We also had the, the drainage project, I was telling you, and we had savings from the leases that you allowed us to pay off in that last year. That saved us $325,000, and then no new one-time projects. Also, we put back in this budget because of the property tax increase that we had in there, the $500,000 we cut at mid-year on the paving. We were able to put that back in this next year's budget, and I know that's important for you all as well. Our health fund cost increase, the city, of course, we have a self-insured health plan, and the city, we put in, needed to put in from the city side, more money to help on that plan to make it solvent, and of course, we passed along an increase to the city employees who have dependent coverage, either a spouse or a family. And we tried to keep that as small as we could, and yet, you know, our goal is to keep the health fund solvent. There is money in here to replace the roof at Paula Martin Jones. We have just gotten to the point where we can't go another year without spending the money to do that. We have buckets around in certain places where we catch water, probably we do today, but we just really feel like we need to replace the roof down there and do that work. Same with the transit building and our public bus system. This next, we, the SCBA equipment replacement. Now, these are all the breathing apparatuses and necessary gear and material that our firefighters wear. Each, each firefighter has this gear, and they have about a 10-year life on them. In about the last three years, Chief Steelman and his staff have been applying for a grant to try to pay for this, and we've been unsuccessful to get that the last three years, and we're really bumped up against where we need to be. So, we want to spend $465,000 and go ahead and purchase that gear and get it out of the way, and we should have about a 10-year life left on that. Oddly enough, and we won't spend a lot of time on it, but we're only in, having a net increase in our budget from last year to this year of $65,000 on the animal shelter. Now, you know, we had a lot of money in there for one-time costs and things like that, so it's hard to do apples to apples exactly, but we feel real good about that cost, and it didn't increase over this last budget year, and we were able to defer some money out of next year's budget back and pay for some one-time costs since we had that money in there. The comprehensive plan, I want to take a minute and talk about Leadco, Longview Economic Development Corporation, and their commitment to the city of Longview and to the comprehensive plan, doing 4B projects. And you'll remember, we entered a contract with them to begin the Aiken Trail replacement and connection of Aiken Trail and the Walking Trail, which was, I think, number five or six ranked project on the comprehensive plan. That overall will be about a $1.9 million project, and Leadco has put money into their budget this year to begin that project. Also, they have agreed, and I think this is a wonderful thing, our bus operations, our trans, public transportation system, there is a statute that authorizes any economic development corporation to fund public transportation. Leadco has put in their budget as well, $300,000, which will, will help us, will pay for our contract with McDonald Transit Corporation for the next year. And I think that's a very worthwhile adventure, venture. The bus stops at business, at the business parks, and then a lot of people do use that system for economic development, for their employment and their work. So, we really appreciate that. We've also increased our demolition budget from about $60,000 to $150,000 to demolish dilapidated property. We need probably 10 times that much, but this is, I think, a good start and will help us out. Property maintenance code, we'll be enforced going forward with those things. Unified development code will be carried over into next year's budget, and both small area plans. Those are all comprehensive plan projects that will be continuing to move forward. So, again, this is where we end up with our fund, our general fund, and our total budget with all the enterprise funds and the revenue funds is $156,788,960, which is $4 million less than last year's budget overall. So, we feel good about that. I wanted to take just a second for answering any questions and talk to you about, not for next year's budget, but, but what we'd like to do at the next council meeting, is have an upcoming budget amendment request. And we want to talk a little bit about our health fund, and we have experienced, and a lot of things that have caused us to raise the, the rates on the dependent coverage and for the city to put in more money on the city side. We've had a couple of really tough years on our claims. They've been really high, and we're looking for a lot of ways to, obviously, to bend the curve on our healthcare costs, and, and along with that, some unusually high costs of claims. We really would like to ask the council to consider an amendment. We have a million and a half dollars that will not affect our fund balance. That's been reserved out the last several years for our OPEB, post-employment healthcare benefits, and we have that money that we had reserved out for this particular purpose, one of them, to help that out. And we want to come back in, in the next meeting and ask you to amend the budget to put $500,000 of that into the health fund reserve that will give them about a million-dollar reserve for, at the end of next year. And they'll still leave a million dollars in that balance. So, again, that won't affect any of the fund balance numbers that I've shown you because that's, that's reserved out of that and not in the general fund balance. So, also with that, we have, are forming an employee committee to take a look at our health fund plan, the benefits that we have, and we want to compare them, and I've asked them not to leave any stone unturned at looking at our plan, our benefits, and seeing how we compare with the county, how we compare with the schools, how we compare with private industry, because we, we're going to have to get a handle on our, on the increasing healthcare costs that we all face. And I know we're not alone. Everybody else is, too. So, we're going to be looking at taking this next year and looking at, to see exactly how we compare to others and what alternatives we might have to, to help reduce the cost of, of our healthcare claims and costs. So, anyway, we'll come back in a couple of weeks and ask you to, for that budget amendment. And again, it's not part of the budget presentation necessarily, but we wanted to visit with you about that before that happens. Okay, and then this is the budget calendar. We, of course, the next council meeting is the 11th. We can call, you can call any more budget work sessions if you'd like to do that or want to spend any more time, but the next one will be August the 11th. Then we have those different dates and rates. And I think that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Any question for Mr. Willard from the council?
Well, I saw one thing I was just wondering about with the, oh, the air packs, I guess, for the fire department?
Yes, sir.
Are we buying all of them at one time?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
So, is there some reason that can't be spread out over, what, 10 years or something? You said that it's the lifetime of those?
The importance of buying them all at one time is because it's such a sensitive piece of safety equipment, they tend to change from year to year. You don't want the button on one to be different, a different button in a different place on something else. It kind of sets us back, but that's just smart business to keep them all the same so that if firefighter's in a bind, he knows where everything's at on it.
Okay.
Doesn't have to think. It's, it's a reaction.
Makes sense.
Good point. I would have never thought of that. That's why you're the chief.
Yes, ma'am.
Very good preliminary job, Mr. Willard. You and your staff are to be commended for, as we say where I'm from, squeezing a turnip. I do have some questions, though. For in this new budget, will, I know we've been under a hiring freeze as we've been cutting. Will we begin hiring again at the city?
Yes, ma'am. We, I may need a little help on this. We are going to lift the hiring freeze. Public safety, civilians have been under the hiring freeze, public safety have not.
Right, correct.
The hiring freeze will be lifted August the 1st.
Okay.
But we do have a few positions that were, that, pardon? October 1st, I'm sorry. But we do have a few positions that we are going to keep open and not, we're not going to cut them, but we're just going to delay and keep them open, and I think there's a couple of civilian positions in police department, telecommunications that they're going to hold on to, not necessarily a freeze, but, and we're just not going to be real aggressive unless, you know, hiring back, but, but the freeze will be lifted October 1st.
And the 2016, 17 budget, it does allow for employee increases, merit increases, or no? How did you guys decide to handle that?
No, there will be no, now, the only increases will be in our public safety where they have their, their annual step increases.
Okay.
In fire and police, they are in their pay plan, which is different from the civilian employees. So, their, their step increases that they have in their plan will be, be.
So, the civilian employees, perhaps hourly, not the ones at the executive and administrative levels? The hourly employees, civilians, there is no increase projected for 16, 17?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Also, I do like the increase in the demolition budget and just would like to say thank you, and I hope we can continue to increase that. and I hope we can continue to increase that. And last but not least, I voted against the Leadco budget a couple of times, and I'm very pleased that, I think because of your presence in negotiating and the new board and leadership at Leadco, we are moving forward and putting dollars into public transportation. Because I remember a few years ago, when I made that recommendation, when I voted against their budget, and I said, "The 4B dollars can be spent this way." I'm glad to know that we have a group there now that understands the importance of investing and using those dollars wisely. So, thank you for negotiating that, and I'm pleased to see us moving ahead.
Well, they, they're very much.
Kudos. Kudos.
Kudos to you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Willard, first off, I want to say, your communication skills are outstanding. And what you've done is you've, there have been no secrets. You've been so open with this whole budget process. You brought this to us months ago. You showed us and the public that we were going to be in a pinch, and you communicated that to us. And so, it makes it easier to swallow when you know ahead of time, and I appreciate that. And I'm glad we're not having to swallow too hard. But your communication is outstanding, and I know I appreciate it, the council appreciates it, and I know the public appreciates it, because they should. There are no secrets here, and I appreciate you taking the time to make us aware, as you have all along this process, of what's going on. Your foresight, your insight, this, this is, I know most of y'all do not understand this, this is no easy feat, is what you've done. You have taken us from a position of a basic recession that we're in, and you've had no fund balance used, which we, we require that of you. We said this is, these are, these are not negotiable. No fund balance used this year. You complied. No cuts to public safety. You complied. Bring us a balanced budget. You've done that. You increased our fund balance, and we weren't expecting that. It's amazing. It's truly amazing. I, I, I'm so encouraged by what we have in Longview. And you all look at your surrounding communities, because we have no tax increase, and our nearest neighbor does, and they have rate increases, and we do not, because of planning, insight, foresight. Everyone involved in this budget, please stand up. Stand up, please, staff, please stand up.
All the directors, managers, everybody standing.
Everyone involved, stand up. This city of Longview is remarkable. I'm just telling you it's remarkable. And I appreciate you, David, and all that you, all the time you put in, all the city staff, y'all have put in hours and hours and hours. And just like you said, you reach down and you cut, and because we had to, but because we asked you to. And I appreciate you, and you've done a phenomenal job. I can't express it enough, and all the citizens of Longview are going to be so, so appreciative as well, because this is tough times. But what it shows is that Longview is still doing good. We're still able to sustain ourselves because of good planning and good leadership, which you're, which you're showing for our city. And I appreciate you very much, David. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And I, I do appreciate that, but honestly, these people, ones that need the, need, they're, they've been awesome, every one of them, so, thank you.
Thank you, sir. We are now to action items. We will consider a resolution authorizing city staff to acquire property on the Hamilton and Nutt survey. Excuse me, Ms. Williams.
Mayor, I'd like to offer a motion that we table action items A, B, and C for consideration at a later time.
And the reason we're doing this is, as I well know, we're still in active negotiation with these landowners, and I think we're close to a resolution.
Yes.
And I would much rather see us resolve, as you would, Ms. Williams.
Yes.
If we can resolve rather than go through any kind of eminent domain, if we possibly can.
Yes, sir.
So, there's a motion, there's a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. A, B, and C are now tabled. Thank you. Sorry, Mr. McPhee. D, consider a resolution authorizing city staff to acquire certain property on M.D. Greer survey A-83. Roland, thank you.
Yes, sir. Mayor, City Council, Mr. Willard, thank you, and fortunately, you only have to listen to me make one of these recommendations to you. I'd like, like to ask you to make and approve the following motion. I move that the city of Longview authorize the use of the power of eminent domain to acquire certain property in the M.D. Greer survey A-83. City of Longview, Gregg County, Texas. Said property consisting of a parcel of land of approximately 1,092 square feet, known as parcel 2014-H-062. All of said parcel being a portion of the same tract of land called lots 1A and 2A, block 36 of Mobberley's East Edition, conveyed from Bessie Birdwell Bowen to Tresha J. Compton and Lawrence B. Johnson by the deed recorded in volume 1886, page 68. Public official records, Gregg County, Texas, and conveyed from Tresha J. Compton and Lawrence B. Johnson to Larry Y. Williams by the deed recorded in volume 2131, page 368. Said tract and said parcel all being more particularly described in attachment A of the resolution before you tonight, for the purpose of constructing both a public roadway, rebuilding Cotton Street, and certain associated public improvements, including, but without limitation, public drainage improvements, public sanitary sewer improvements, and public water pipeline improvements.
Excuse me, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We're now consider a resolution amending the membership of the comprehensive plan advisory committee. Mr. Shirley?
Thank you, Mayor Mack, members of council, Mr. Willard. This is an ordinance amending the membership as directed at the last council meeting based on the discussion. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Shirley? Is there a motion?
No. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We're now consider a resolution appointing the members of the comprehensive plan advisory committee. Mr. Shirley?
Thank you, Mayor Mack. This is just a resolution to appoint the members as submitted by all the council members and before you on exhibit A. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions?
No. No. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, sir. We're to zoning and a public hearing item now, please. We have considered amending chapter 19, article 9, Energy Conservation Code. Mr. Sebastian?
Thank you, Mayor, Mr. Willard, council. Thank you. Last year, Texas legislation passed the House Bill of 1776, which adopted only chapter 11 of the IRC, and also adopted further down, as you'll see, the Energy Code. And I'll refer to as the Energy Code, it's the International Energy Conservation Code. It will be, the IRC will be effective September 1st. November 1st, the Energy Code will take effect for all non-single-family. There's three paths for compliance, but note that all three paths have a mandatory portion of it. There's a prescriptive methodology, a performance and energy rating index, ERI. Basically, the prescriptive method is, as you would think, you tell us how to do it and we'll do it that way. And that pretty much sums up the prescriptive. When you look at all the different things that they'll be looking at, the R-values, Duck values, and so forth, you'll see that there's really, we're basically doing a good part of this, and I'll mention some of the new things that are coming into play. The performance establishes criteria for compliance using simulated energy performance, and basically, they'll have options there where they'll be able to adjust for different, different parts of the performance. In other words, they can shift things around instead of just making it straight, strictly The energy rating system is based on a 2006 code, and it goes from 0 to 100. And the, the basis there is, again, to get a permanent energy efficiency, rather than having it all over the, the board. And there's trade-offs and short-lived measures for that permanent energy. The significant changes on, on the residential energy are a host of different, different items. Again, most of those we do, but you'll see the efficiency of light, for example, changes from 50% to 75%. There's improved window performance, wall sealing, insulation, whole house mechanical ventilation is required as well, the hot pipe insulation is required. The changes for commercial will be the commissioning of the, of most of the systems, HVAC, water heating, lighting, envelopes, the new equipment efficiencies, additional requirements for Again, most of this we already do in the inspection process. There's a permanent certificate filled out by the builder, the consultant. It's got to be posted in the, near the furnace of the utility room or in approved location, depending on when that's done. The certificate lists all of these things that will, that will continue to list all these things, and including the new things that are coming up. Finally, how, how's this all going to impact consumers, contractors, and developers? And I think that's the bottom-line question everyone has to ask. And what I've sourced from the Energy Department is this chart, which does show the cost benefits adopted by the 2015. Energy codes save homeowners, M-reners, money on their utility bills. Their energy savings from new costs will offset the additional costs. Over the length of the mortgage, these accumulated savings can be up to $10,000. Again, the initial output in zone 3 is where we're at, could be up to 24, almost $2,500. But there is a savings involved. What we've done to implement training, as we've been going along, all projects are permitted before September, will be granted under the 2009 code. The building department will allow a learning curve for all stakeholders until January 1st. Basically, let me point out that that will give them three months to come into compliance. In preparation for the adoption of the Energy Code, the Texas Building Association has hosted two separate training, one in March and one in April. The city hosted a training May 19th at the library, and right now, we're in a conversation with the International Code Council to host a joint Energy Code seminar for contractors, developers, and the inspectors. Questions? I know I went through that quickly.
I have, anybody questions?
Do you have any questions?
Yes, sir.
So, what we're doing is just approving something the state says we have to do anyway?
Yes, it is mandated by the state.
Okay. Great question.
Yes, sir.
Maybe you said it, and I just, I'm so busy with these numbers. What is this going to cost the builders? You said it's going to save the homeowners, which is one thing, but what does it cost the builders? Do we have any idea, or did I miss that?
On, in zone 3, which is where we're at, the, they're saying that the cost could go up to $2,495 in costs associated with implementing the code.
Wait, is that?
But that's cumulative.
That's $2,495. It's going to cost more to the builder to, to do a structure?
Sure, yes.
Okay. And that doesn't have any basis on size, or it's just a $2,400 cost?
Well, it would, it would depend on the size of the home, of course, depending on how large it is and, or how small it is. It's going to impact all homes, though, accordingly. I don't have a statistic to give you on.
Sure, sure. I'm not trying, I just kind of need an idea of what we're looking at from, from the builder's standpoint, because obviously, that's going to be passed off to the consumer.
Right.
I mean, the builder's not going to absorb that. They're going to pass that off to the consumer, because this is mandated that they have to do it, so they're going to pass it off. I'm just curious, because they're going to pass it off, I mean, that savings to the homeowner is not really as much as it looks like, is they're going to, they're going to take the brunt of that?
Yes.
Correct?
Yes. And it'll be obviously put into the size of the cost of the end product.
Very good.
And this is new construction only?
No, actually, there is components of this that will apply to remodeling as well. For example, if you're remodeling, the only, the portion that you're remodeling would be applicable. And you have the option to comply with the other portion, but in my experience, most have not.
Okay. This does require a public hearing, so public hearing is now open. Is there any comments from the public? You have the comments from council. I know this is, Mr. Pearl, I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but you're a builder. Do you see this as something that's going to be prohibitive, or is this just something we just have to deal with? I mean, we can't fight it, it's a state mandated thing, but.
Well, it, it depends on the customer that it's going to impact.
Okay.
High-end homes, it's not going to affect them that much, because I would say it's going to run 2% to 5% generally on the normal range of a house.
Okay.
It depends on the type of equipment you use, the insulation package. If you foam the house, you've solved a lot of these problems, but foaming generally costs twice as much as doing a bad insulation or a blown bad insulation, or even a hybrid. And a hybrid is basically a half foam and a half compacted wall with cellulose or something like that, where they do the netting on it. A lot of the heat loss that we had gotten over the years, we've gotten away from, but caused, the heat and cold loss, because of the windows and doors. We've gone to the higher-end vinyl windows and doors, and a lot of them have gone to the wood clad and stuff like that. But those go to the higher-end homes. So, some of it's it'll affect, some of it's it won't. If you're building a lot of tiny houses or small houses, it will affect a little bit more.
Okay.
Because it'll impact those people more because of their income and because of what the cost of the house is going to be.
Very good.
So, it, it's like he said, it depends on the structure, the size of the structure.
Well, I appreciate that. It makes me feel a little bit more educated. Well, the public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion on this item?
No. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mrs. Sebastian.
Thank you.
We're now to items of community interest. Mr. Moore?
I had my second town hall meeting Monday evening. I want to thank all of those folks that attended. I think we had a good interchange of thoughts and ideas, and Matthew, thank you for advertising it on Facebook, because I don't know how to do that. So, I appreciate your help, but I'm, I'm glad we did it. I think it was a success.
Ms. Snotty?
Good evening, everyone. I just want to say kudos to Chief Bishop and your staff for your interaction with the kids and the community. That is so vital in our community. We know that it is key to fostering healthy relationships, so please continue to do that as well as Chief Stillman. Thank both of you guys.
Ms. Williams?
First, I want to thank the council members and the mayor that came to the Christian Methodist Episcopal Regional Conference at the Hilton Garden Inn. Chief Stillman happened to just kind of find his way there, it's a long story. A lot of people in Longview were there, because we were at the Hilton Garden Inn. And I was supposed to have a picture, but it didn't turn out right. But thank you to council member Steve Pirtle, David Wright, councilwoman Snotty, and of course, our mayor. And by the way, you are officially a member of the Holy Harmonizers. You had to be there to get that. Okay. Did I have some slides? That one worked. Okay, great. Family Dollar is opening on Young Street this Saturday at 8:00 a.m. There will be a ribbon cutting. I encourage all of my fellow council members to show up, be there. The gentleman who is actually the owner and the general manager have both reached out to me. One brick at a time, one step at a time, one heart at a time, we are transforming South Longview. So, please come, it's open to the entire public. They're going to be giving away bicycles and all kinds of things, and I think hot dogs, fire department, and the police departments will both be there. So, please show up, 8:00 a.m. Saturday morning, okay? And Sunday, July 31st, community collaboration will be hosted by Sassy Longview. The purpose is to bring all the different organizations together and to make sure, kind of like the mayor's community calendar, to make sure that, you know, we're not all on the same day and that people are participating, because this organization is dedicated to volunteering and bringing people together. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Ishihara?
Nothing for me.
Mr. Wright?
Nothing tonight.
Mr. Pirtle?
I want to thank a few people that work for the city, the city inspector for one, because he's kind of been putting up with me a little bit. I want to thank Roland and Michael Shirley. I've spent a lot of time with them the last few weeks, and we've gone over some things, and I'm getting well-educated on how and I'm getting well-educated on how some of the things run around here. Anyway, they're doing a good job, and they're, they're putting up with me. So I wanted to thank them.
Thank you, Mr. Pearl. Mr. Willard.
Nothing.
Nothing. Okay. We have the dog, oh, I just said okay, didn't I? I went the whole meeting, and I just said it. My mom left, so it's okay.
Mr. Won kudos.
Yeah, one kudos, yeah. Geez. We have the dog days of summer, Saturday, August 13th, from 10:00 a.m. to noon at the Longview Swim Center on Fairmont. For more information, call 237-1270, or go to longviewtexas.gov/parks. We also have, how can you be a go-giver? Helping bring wheelchair-accessible swings to Longview Parks. I'm going to go over, I'm going to talk about that some more in just a minute. Upcoming events, we have the Longview Kennel Club Dog Show. We have the Arts View Peter Pan Performance. We have Beauty and the Beast at Longview Community Center, and we have the 5th Annual Guthrie Creek Warm-Up Disc Golf. So please join and continue to bring your items to the community calendar, and we will get them on and advertised, because we think it's very important. Before we do anything else, I'm going to read something to you all. Believe it or not, I get a lot of emails, and I get a lot of comments, some good, some bad. Every now and then, I just want to, sometimes I just feel compelled to read one of them, so I'm reading one of them. "A Note of Appreciation. I want to compliment you and your department for the quick response to clearing of the brush located at the corner of Lilac Drive and North 8th Street several days ago. It has created a blind spot for traffic going east on Lilac and turning onto the North 8th Street. It was a pleasure to talk to you and one of, and one-on-one, and to experience the pleasant personality projected to me as an older person. I can now add you as another city employee with a pleasant disposition towards old folks." And this was to the quick response mowing, and this is from a Mr. William F. Martin, Jr. This is just a, this is Billy Martin. This is just one of those things where, once again, city staff is doing a great job. And I just, you know, I get, I get 20 to 1 compliments versus complaints now. And a year ago, it wasn't that way. And I appreciate y'all. I appreciate everyone that takes time to be nice to people and treat them like they are our bosses, because that's what they are. The citizens of Longview are our bosses. They pay our salaries and they, the ones that put us here. So thank you, and I appreciate that. Survey time. First question. If you were able to visit with Texas Governor Greg Abbott, one-on-one about topics most important to Longview, what would you discuss? I was, I'm shocked at the results on this one.
Most people said economic development.
39% economic development. 24% was homelessness. Transportation, 8%. And funding local projects, 8%, which shocks me, because I want more state funding for local projects. And I want more help with our transportation. I want help with everything. And fortunately, I do have a one-on-one meeting with the governor next month. It was supposed to be this month, but it was postponed because of his injury. So I do have a one-on-one meeting with the governor next month, and I look forward to visiting with him about things that do affect our community, and I appreciate all the feedback I got, and I got a bunch of others as well, which I will take into consideration when we do have our meeting. So we will, it's interesting to see how the public views what we can and cannot accomplish through our state level, and we will have a nice meeting, and I'm looking very forward to that. Second question, another fun one. Did you watch any part of the Republican National Convention? 79% said yes. 21% said no. Okay. Did you watch any part of the Democrat, or do you plan on watching the Democratic? 52% yes, and 48% no. I'm kind of surprised, because I can tell you, I find it fascinating, fascinating when these conventions go on and the people that speak, and I find myself agreeing with every one of them. Like, you can't agree with everybody, because they're on different sides. So it's, it's very interesting, but I'm glad to see that we do participate, and, because this will have an impact. This election will have an impact on our community, no matter who wins. It will affect, as you were talking about, our healthcare. It will have an effect on everything about our community. So interesting to see how we view these conventions and the fact that we do actually do some participation in them. I want to go back to a few things. First off, I want to talk about the wonderful, fantastic, fabulous balloon event we had last weekend. Once again, Dan Droge and the volunteers, the hundreds and hundreds of volunteers that spent their time out there to make this an incredible event for East Texas and for Greg County and for Longview. The number of people that come to that event floor me every year. It's just, it's astounding. The fantastic groups that played, rest us heart, of course, they're one of my favorites, because that's more in my era. But I can tell you, Saturday night, there were so many people out there, the grounds were packed, and then, of course, the rains came. And a lot of people had to leave, because it was, we thought we were going to drown. It was, it was incredible rain. So a lot of people left, but then you know what? A lot of people stayed, a lot of people came back. And Aaron Morris and his group got up there and performed, and, and I've never heard them, I'm not, I've never heard them before, I'm not a country western person, but I am now, I'm a fan. When he got up and he, first thing he said was, first of all, thank you for those of you that stayed, and we will play as long as you want us to play, as long as you're here, and we will sign autographs and take selfies, as long as there's someone in this place. And you know what? They didn't leave till 1:45 in the morning. So, so impressed with that, that commitment, that, they could have walked off and gotten paid anyway and never have to perform. They waited it out, they let them squeeze you the stage off. They did an amazing job, and, and the citizens of Longview appreciate it. They came back, they stayed, people were calling, hey, they're playing, people kept coming back. So it was fantastic. But, but just let me, let me make this very clear. It all starts with Dan Droge. Dan is the chairman of this, and he does a phenomenal job. So if you see Dan out, shake his hand there, he probably hadn't gone back to work, they're probably still recovering, because that's a long, long process, a lot of work, a lot of cleanup, a lot of preparation. But Dan did a phenomenal job, and I'm, I'm so impressed, and I'm so appreciative to that. Back to two other things. Book club time. Get your reading glasses on, girls. Come on. We have a new book called The Shark and the Goldfish. It's awesome. It's by the same author, John Gordon, that did The Energy Bus. And this guy has inspired me so much because of his positivity. If you will just look on his Facebook, you need to follow this guy. Every day, he has something so profound and so inspirational on there that you cannot read his thought of the day and not smile and have a better day. You cannot do it. I challenge you to do it, because you can. He's so inspirational. We picked this book up. It's positive ways to thrive during waves of change, and, and we're all going through waves of change. Our country's going through waves of change. So this book is so fitting at this time and this place. It's the simplest, easiest book to read, it's even got pictures in it. You're going to think I've really lost it because of this book, but it'll take you 45 minutes. I'm a horrible slow reader, and I did it in less than an hour. So pick it up, read it. We're going to start August the 8th, for four weeks in, in August, on Monday nights. Find out if you're a shark or a goldfish. It's fascinating. So look forward to y'all participating. I know the books are available at Barron's or online, but try to shop local if we can. Please support our local bookstores. So I look forward to The Shark and the Goldfish. Last but not least, I'm going to go back to our Go-Giver Fund and our swings. I just want you to know that the response to this survey question has been overwhelming. But like any, what I think is a good idea, it brings challenges. And this has done that very thing. It's brought challenges to the forefront. And all I can say is Scott Karen, Sean, Keith, David, but especially Scott and Sean, you guys, and Keith, you guys really opened my eyes and helped us to see how and what we can do. You know, it's, it's one thing to have an idea, it's something to make an idea reality, it's something to make the reality something that's a good idea still. Because sometimes you do that no good deed goes unpunished, and that's not what we want to be a part of. So there are challenges to this endeavor. You have to understand, these swings will be carrying handicapped children inside of a wheelchair, and so they're going to require surfaces where wheelchairs can get to this swing. It requires a, a large area to be able to physically put this swing into position. It requires a flooring that is suitable for the swing and the wheelchairs. So it's not just go by a swing, prop it up, and somebody start swinging. And then remember this, this will be a platform that carries weight that could hurt somebody. So we have to be careful on how we do this. And these are things that Scott and Sean have, have been very, very gracious to, to solve these problems. We've got these problems solved. We will make this happen. But what we do have to realize is it cannot happen in every park in Longview, which is what I wish could happen, but it can't, because number one, size constraints just won't allow it. We don't, we don't have the ability to put one of these swings in every park in Longview. But what we do have the ability to do is to put one of these swings in every park in every district. And that's what we will do. We will place one of these swings with the associated floor, sidewalk accessibility where the wheelchair can actually roll up to it, with fencing around it to protect others that don't belong in there, and we will find a way to make it accessible for the families that have wheelchairs. So we will be able to do this in one park in every district in Longview, which will serve our community. And I am so pleased that they have helped with this endeavor. We will be placing them at the, in District 6, it'll be the Rotary and Bucks Playground. District 5 will be Spring Hill Playground. District 4 will be Patterson Park Playground. District 3 will be Broughton Park. District 2 will be Stamper Park, and District 1 will be McQuarter Park. So we've covered our city in these, in these swings. Which brings us to our donations. Because what it takes, like I said, it's not just throwing up a swing for $1,600, which was my idea. But once again, sometimes my short side in this gets in, in the way of my enthusiasm. So all total, it will require approximately $8,000 per swing, per park, for the swing, the flooring, the fencing, the sidewalks, all involved. And we're going to do it right in every single park. So if you add that up, it's going to take about $50,000. And I have no doubts whatsoever that we will raise this money. As a matter of fact, I have $1,600 commitments from the following people, and I'm going to read your name, because I am so thankful to you all for stepping up. We've been doing this for less than a week now. Julie Woods, Tommy Lloyd, the Longview Police Officers Association, Longview Regional Hospital, Good Shepherd Medical Center, Excel ER, Dr. Bob Wheeler, the Gregton Rotary Club. And I'm especially proud of my colleagues in the dental profession, the specialists involved with doing dental care in Longview. We have 100% participation from every specialist in Longview. We have Darryl Sherman and Patrick Briscoe with Sherman and Briscoe Orthodontics. Mark Camp with East Texas Dentodontics. We have Dr. Horn and Dr. Minor with Horn and Minor Pediatrics. We have Adam Spence with Spencer Orthodontics. Alejandro Kovacs with Pinnacle Periodontics. We have Doctors Renee and Chuck Magoo with Magoo and Magoo Pedodontics. We have Dr. Fadahl and Jennifer Rogers with Fadahl Pedodontics. And my practice, East Texas Oral Surgery, with my partner Chris Johnson and myself. So that's a good start, gang. We're going to do this, and we're going to do it in every district. And I'm very proud that we are stepping up and doing what is right for these children, because I have no doubt this will take place. I know that this community comes together when it's, when it's needed, because I know if we can raise a million dollars for the animal shelter, we can raise 50,000 for kids that need wheelchair swings. I have no doubt about it. And so I appreciate you, I appreciate the people involved. Don't stop giving, we still have a ways to go. And also, the Lions Club. The Lions Club has a project already ongoing that I wasn't even aware about, aware of when this took place. They had their pennies for that 10,000 pennies project, they're trying to raise $10,000, and they're already up to over $7,000 right now. And they have the potential, if they make it to $10,000, to receive a matching grant from the national organization for another $10,000. So we could be looking at $20,000 from the Lions Club. So throw your pennies in the jar for the Lions Club when you see them in the stores and the restaurants and the businesses in town, because we're going to make this happen in Longview, one way or the other, it's going to happen. And it's going to be something in every district that each one of us can be proud of. And I appreciate y'all's support. Go out and work for your districts, but we're going to make it happen. So thank you, Longview, for opening your hearts and your checkbook for kids that really deserve this. So what a pleasure, what a pleasure. That's all I have. So this meeting is now adjourned.